I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that our district clerk lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of September 23rd, 2014 be approved as submitted? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, seven in favor and none opposed, thank you. May I have a motion, please, that we approve the consent agenda as listed? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, seven in favor and none opposed, thank you. Treasurer's report. In your agenda is the treasurer's report for the month of July 2014. May I have a motion, please, that the treasurer's report, which includes the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school launch fund cash report, and school launch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending July 31st, 2014, be approved as submitted? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, seven in favor and none opposed, thank you. Special reports. This evening, we have robotics presentation because they are, and we are with you, celebrating your 10-year anniversary. So, happy anniversary and welcome.
Hi, I'm Amel.
Hi, I'm Carolyn.
And we're here representing the robotics team. We wanted to come and thank you all for your support for the robotics team. Without you, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, inspire many kids to live their lives or their careers as engineers or whatever they pursue in life. We'd also like to thank you for allowing us to go to the first advocacy conference in DC. It was especially difficult since it was during Regents Week, but it was a really great opportunity. I got to go and I got to meet kids all around the world on different teams around the state. And we got to advocate for STEM in our state and meet with our state representatives. So, that was a really cool opportunity. And we have some of our students made an awards for some of our major people we'd really like to thank for supporting us. So, some of our kids made awards since we're celebrating our 10th anniversary, and we just finished our 10th anniversary competition season, and we'd all have pins for you. So, we're gonna hand those out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is beautiful. All right. All right, you know what, I'm gonna put it, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much. It's not very often that we start the meeting with gifts and stuff, so, thank you. And we will proudly wear those pins at New York State School Board Convention. This is a great opportunity for us to celebrate what you're doing. You know, you come here and you're thanking us for what we do for you and for allowing you to do it. We have to thank you because you make us look good. I mean, we could just authorize the club, but if you did not have this wonderful motivation and if you were not passionate about what you're doing, I don't know who would go to Washington to advocate during, you know, Regents Week to talk about STEM. And so, thank you, because thanks to you, we look wonderful behind the stage. And board members, I want to remind you that robotics has, you know, many things during the year, as you know, especially there's a special day at RIT where they are there with their robots. So, when we're here, when you guys have dates, if you can let us know, for some of us, you know, if we are available, we'd love to be there to support you even more.
We actually have an event coming up. It's our offseason event that we run with a few other teams called Ruckus. It's a Halloween-themed offseason, and it's on October 18th. So, you're all welcome to come.
It's at the Main Street Armory, and it's from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And it's free, open to the public. It's great for family, so the kids can come up and see the robots up close and personal. There's gonna be about over 40 teams from the US and Canada coming. So, it's gonna be really fun.
That's a Saturday, am I correct?
Yes, that's Saturday.
So, it's homecoming day, so we can celebrate, you know, robotics and athletics and just about anything happening in Penfield on that day.
Yeah, that is homecoming, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming this evening. Thank you. All right, we now move on to our visitor's speaking time. Good evening, Aubrey.
Hi, so, school's now in full swing and we're no longer settling in. And as for sports, our volleyball teams, both boys and girls, in JV and Varsity have been absolutely dominating. And for boys track and cross-country, they, two weeks ago today, they gave Dave Hennessy his 500th win, and girls are soon to follow. For boys soccer, they had a huge win over Churchville Chi-Li Saturday, three to two, and they won against Victor last night, one to zero. And since the start of school, all, we are proud to say, we have over 62 clubs at Penfield High School. And back-to-school night for PHS is October 2nd. And for Bay Trail, grade six is October 8th, and seven, grade seven and eight is October 9th. And Indian Landing had their back-to-school day last Friday, and they had a cookout and balloon making, a lot of fun things. And Harris Hill has been proud to say that they're teaching other kindergarteners to walk the talk, and they wanted me to mention that. And homecoming is three weeks away, and I'll have more to talk about that next meeting.
Great, thank you, Aubrey. Board members, any questions or comments for Aubrey? Well, thank you for bringing us news from beyond Penfield High School. We don't always hear from the elementary schools, so thanks, this is great. All right, we now move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam?
Thank you. We have a few student and staff honors I'm gonna go over, and also we'll talk about the Parent Bill of Rights. Mark Sansucci will review our building capacity and enrollment update, and we'll also, Mark will also be talking about a partnership we have with the town. So, first off, student and staff honors, AP Scholar Awards. These are Penfield High School students and 2014 graduates have been named as AP Scholars based on their exceptional achievement on AP examinations. Those are advanced placement courses and the exams that go with them. For these slides, for those viewers at home, I won't have all of the names because the list gets very long, but all of the student names who receive these honors are already up on our webpage, and you can go and take a look at all of the names of the students who've picked up these awards. So, the first is the AP National Scholar Award. 10 PHS students and graduates earned an average score of at least a four on all AP exams taken and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. It's exceptional students at the high school. The other type of award is called the AP Scholar with Distinction Award. 65 high school students and graduates earned an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. AP Scholar with Honor Award. 25 students earned the average score of at least a 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And then the AP Scholar Award. 54 students and graduates completed three or more AP examinations with scores of three or higher. Just to go back to the AP, across the board, our Penfield students score higher than the rest of the state average on our AP exam, so kudos to the students here, and their names are all up on the webpage, and kudos, of course, to our exceptional advanced placement teachers who prepare those students for those very rigorous exams. We also have the National Merit Semifinalist. PHS seniors Jamie Argento, Timothy Dunn, Emma Garcia, Jeffrey Hu, Delaney Palma, Manuel Stokel, and Felix Wielacher have been named as semifinalists in the 2015 National Merit Scholarship Competition. They are among 16,000 semifinalists selected from over 1.4 million juniors who took the qualifying exam last year, and they will now move on to compete for one of 7,600 National Merit Scholarships. So, just kudos to those incredible students at the high school in their senior year, and their names are also up on the webpage. We have some other staff and student honors. Fashion show here, PHS senior Sarah Conan, and I'm gonna ask Sarah, 'cause she's actually here, she does a couple of things, I'll take her from behind the camera. Can you just come stand up here when I read this, Sarah? And I already talked to Mr. Sedoti, we're gonna make sure we'll get you up on the camera, too. So, for the community watching, Sarah not only is a fashion diva, but also works the cameras here as a work-study student. And Sarah has been recognized as a new and upcoming designer of Rochester, and her next line will be featured in the October 18th Fashion Weeks show. Sarah will also model one of her pieces during the show. So, just if we could get a round of applause, 'cause she's here for Sarah. I promised Mr. Sedoti you'd get right back to work after. Sarah, thank you so much. And our student rep has already mentioned, but I'll mention again, 500 wins. So, longtime PHS cross-country coach Dave Hennessy achieved a milestone 500 wins for the Varsity Boys Team at the September 9th meet, and if all goes well, and so far it is, he's on track to celebrate another 500 with the Girls Team around September 30th. So, just a congratulations to Coach Hennessy, and when he hits that 1,000th win, we'll bring him to the board meeting for celebration. And Nancy Bradstreet, who is also in the audience, the director of communications for Penfield, has been named the winner of an award in the photograph category of the New York School Public Relations Association Annual Communication Contest. The photo taken at the district's 2014 Buddy Olympics here at the high school was selected for recognition out of more than 330 contest entries submitted this year. Nancy's won previous awards in the district newsletter, website, and annual report categories. So, congratulations to Nancy, and the picture's up there as well. 'Cause you'll know me as a pretty honest guy. I just got back today from the superintendent's conference where I was supposed to pick up that award, and I couldn't find the table. So, it's gonna be at NISBA, and I'm asking the board to help remind me that we've gotta bring that award home with us.
We will remind you.
Thank you. I'm now gonna turn it over to Mr. Piper, who's gonna talk about the Parent Bill of Rights.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Just to review, Mr. Turkowski gave a presentation to the board and to the public on July 8th regarding the Parents' Bill of Rights. So, I just wanna recap some of that information that was shared at that time, that the Parents' Bill of Rights is part of the data privacy and security information coming from the New York State Education Department, was originally adopted on March 31st as part of the Common Core Reform Act. That came out of a lot of the concern around the education data portal and the use of INBloom to transfer student data and teacher data, principal data, from our local data sources, our student information systems, to the state educational data portal. It talks about the notification release of student information, especially that personal identifiable information, performance data for students, and how that's supposed to happen, when it's supposed to happen, and whom that data can be released to. And it also required us to adopt a Parents' Bill of Rights for data privacy and security that it was to be posted on our website. In addition, it required that the state education department would create a position of chief privacy officer within the state and within their department. That has not yet occurred. This individual is supposed to head up the effort around data security statewide and provide additional guidance regarding these last two bullets, as well as the Parents' Bill of Rights, but especially around the privacy and security policies that districts are to develop and implement. That has not been done. We haven't received any guidance from BOSI's on that policy because the state hasn't provided BOSI's with the guidance to then translate and provide to us. And it also, part of that is also in dealing with any of our third-party vendors that do have any of our students' data, that could be assessment tools or other electronic means that how student data translates student data from one platform to another throughout the district and to the state. You were provided with a copy of the Parents' Bill of Rights in your handbook that you can read fully. We adapted this from the BOSI's provision. BOSI's went ahead even without the full guidance from NICE and developed a sample Bill of Rights for us to use for our website. And talking with Marty Merle, one of our data professionals, as well as Ed Turkowski, our technology director, we adapted it and added in the information regarding the FERPA definitions of personal identifiable information for students, just so that that was very clear, and included that in our Parents' Bill of Rights, and that's the portion that you see here on the screen now. And then we have the language that was provided by BOSI's in the following two slides. And then we also added an appendix regarding the contracts with third-party vendors, so that it would be very specific. One of the requirements will be that this information is signed by the third-party vendor, so that it's very clear what the expectations are around student, teacher, and principal data. So, we just wanted to make sure that the board and the public were aware, and we'd like to have this information up on our website, and then we'll be waiting to develop the policy once we do get guidance from the state and from BOSI's. So, this is kind of the first step in that direction, and we've been having these conversations with vendors as we've looked at piloting different tools and things of that nature in the district, making sure that the contracts, that they're aware of the New York State requirements around these provisions in the contract, and making sure that we're all on the same page, if that's part of the process. So, I just wanted to make sure the board was up to speed with that.
Thank you, Jim. Board members, any questions or comments? Just to clarify, this is no changes to our policy whatsoever, it's just that we need to post the information.
Right, the original requirement was that the Parents' Bill of Rights would be up on the website. I think by July 29th was a deadline they had set, but the state didn't really follow through with a lot of the steps that they said they were gonna take, and so we were really waiting on guidance. We didn't feel comfortable as an individual district going out there and setting up our own Bill of Rights, so we had dapped at this and waited for BOSI's, so.
Very.
This doesn't change any of our existing policies at this point, just, I think, informs our practice a little bit more.
Thank you.
I don't believe it, I think it might somewhere in there, I'd have to look at it a little bit more closely again. We simply adopted the language, it was what the state required, was the Parents' Bill of Rights. We could certainly make that adjustment to it prior to it being posted on the website.
Just a thought, because I know sometimes it is guardian, be more inclusive.
All right, so if you flip to the next slide, and there you go, we'll turn it over to Dr. Mark Sansucci.
Thank you, good evening. The purpose of this brief presentation is just to update the board and the public on where we were as we entered into the school year in terms of elementary class sizes and also secondary school enrollment overall. And we'll, there'll be a much more lengthy and more thorough presentation of enrollment and enrollment projection and discussion of that as we move further into the budget cycle. I think in November, we'll be taking a look at that. But it's always a question as we come into the school year, and we just didn't have the opportunity. You've been provided with the data, but we didn't have an opportunity to share it publicly in the first two meetings in September, so we wanted to correct that oversight. And also to talk to you a little bit about what some next steps might be with regard to the capacity of our buildings, particularly at the elementary school. So, on the left-hand side of the slide, for Cobles and for Harris Hill, are last year's numbers, and as we came into this school year in August, just before the opening of school, you can see the incoming classes, the numbers of sections, and the overall, the average class size in each of those areas. And what you'll notice here, I think, is that at Cobles at least, they have one grade level, the fifth grade this year, the third grade last year, of three sections. A fourth-grade, four-section kindergarten class came in, so they stay for the time being at 23 sections of, 23 class sections in the school. That'll, the question will be, what will happen next year if another four, if another four-section kindergarten enrolls? Will we be able to accommodate that in the building? And I'll talk a little bit about that as we go further. At Harris Hill, exactly the opposite. They've, this year, they have four sections of everything, and next year, they will, or this year, this year, they have, the incoming kindergarten class was remarkably small, about 61 kids, so they have three sections of kindergarten for this year at Harris Hill, so from 24 to 23. Here are the other two elementary schools, Indian Landing and Scribner, 21 and 21, 25 and 25. As you can see, Indian Landing is a little bit more variable in their enrollment through the years. They have several sections at three, and in fact, would be, have increased a section this year, except for the fact that last year's kindergarten section of four reduced to three as we moved throughout the year. So, they stay stable, but only with those adjustments. Scribner has had one class of five, and they've been pretty steady at four and a robust floor as we move throughout the course of the year. So, is there any, do you have any specific questions to this year's enrollment? We were on target, our projections were fairly accurate, we ended up about where we thought we would be, but obviously, where we are comes with some challenges, so. 'Cause if not, I'd like to go on to this slide, which just shows a brief overcap of where we.
Mark, can you give us a second? Board members, do you have any questions about enrollments or? No, we're good, okay, sorry.
Okay, sorry. So, what do we project? We projected 300, this, again, this will be done much more thoroughly in November, but we projected 315, kindergarten always being the hardest, you know, how many kindergartners will show up is always the great question, and we enrolled 296, one to five, fair, fairly close. First grade has been, always been one of the more difficult classes. That at least seemed to work its way out this year. And six through eight, under 10, over by 11. Again, when you're talking about 1,400 kids, those are not significant variances. Overall, we projected, over-projected by 21 kids, that's pretty much as good as it gets. That's on target. But again, the question that we have as we move forward has to do with the capacity at the elementary schools. As you remember, a number of years ago, we had a study done of the capacities of our buildings, and at that time, the elementary schools were tight. At that time, we were, in terms of the available capacity in the building, we were using about all of it at the elementary schools. Since then, what's changed are the uses of the building, we've, in terms of AIS and RTI, has increased the usage of spaces in the building, and the one unknown, the thing that was unknown at the time of that study was full decay. That's used up available space in the buildings. So, what we've experienced is, as you've seen from the previous slides, we're okay, we're sort of on track, but what we're experiencing is as, is that we're right on the edge of not being able to accommodate an additional class in various schools. So, we've already pushed, as you know, Scribner's already pushed into Bay Trail just a little ways. We've been okay at Cobles because we haven't had an upswing in class size, and they still have that class of three. But we're at the point where what we would like to recommend administratively, and we've been talking with the facilities committee about this, because it has a long-term facilities impact as well, is the need to really update that enrollment, or that capacity study of those buildings. We went back to Dr. Saversky and got a proposal for it. I've provided you a copy of that, but I think what our next step should be, as we move forward, is an update of that capacity study to make sure we understand what's available in those buildings. That'll inform some of our choices as we move forward in the near term about class size, but also inform the facilities committee as they make choices with regard to planning for long-term facilities. You have the proposal, it's within the authority of the superintendent, it's within, the budget amount is not such that it would require specific authorization from the board, but what we did want to do is bring that, you talk about the concern, and at least have and answer any questions, and see if there's any concerns about our going forward with that before we do so.
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments? John?
I just, I just think it's a great idea to follow up, Mark, and I think for the public, it's, you know, we all look at our own space from time to time, what do we have room for, what's changed, and what's the future? So, I think it'll be great to get this update because of the things that have changed in the last, what was it, three years ago, we got the original study?
2011.
2011?
Eleven, I think so.
Yeah, so this is, this is a great thing to do, and I think it's, you know, great for long-term planning.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. I just also wanted to update the board on the progress of a cooperative venture with the town, and that is our lease of a portion of this, the sewage, the old, the unused, the sewage treatment facility at Channing Philbrook Park. So, the town's use of that has decreased over the years, some space is available, and we've been in conversation with the town with regard to our potential use of it. As you know, we are very cramped at the site of our buildings and grounds and transportation department. The town is amenable, we've worked our way through what is, I think, a very favorable lease, certainly very fair. The town is not asking for any, for any rent for the use of the facilities, they simply want us to pay the water tax for our use of water, which is a couple hundred dollars a year, and for any utilities that we use in terms of heat, water, and electricity. What we would plan on doing with the space, and the town will still be using some of it, there's a pole barn on the side, they use that for storage, we've agreed that we'll use some storage, indoor storage space in the pole barn as it becomes available, but one of our main interests is really in being able to put storage trailers on the site in, they have a fenced-in area. Right now, there are, there's trailers at Cobles and at the bus garage. By moving those, particularly the bus garage area, we create more parking, more space, and it really helps take some of the steam out of that facility. We're also obligated by the rent, or by the agreement to minor repairs, so the idea is if a window breaks, we'll fix it, if the window needs to be replaced, that's not our responsibility. So, again, it has been, we've been working on this for a while with the town, but I think it is an outstanding opportunity for us. Mr. LaFouten, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Crackman have been wonderful to work with with regard to that, and I would like to thank them. But the plan is, at this point, we had some last-minute tweaks to the language, it's at the town's attorney, they plan on bringing it to the town board for their authorization at their October board meeting, and I will be bringing the lease here for your review and approval at the first October meeting as well.
Excellent, thank you, Mark. Board members, questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, Catherine?
Is there any reason to be concerned about, okay, yeah, I mean, you know, like, what's a minor repair? Is there a cap as to how much that would cost?
Yeah, it's funny, we talked about that, and certainly that was our concern, too, is what are we, not that anybody, we just wanted to be sure we both understood, that both parties understood what that meant, so we drafted a list of examples and said, this is what we think it means, and they've agreed to that. So, we did have some conversation around that, and it's about what you would expect.
Yes, right, okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
Thank you, Mark. This is just a great example of, you know, we always ask, we are always asked, do you ever work with the town, partner with the town? This is a great example of the school district partnering with the town to find, you know, a solution for something that we need, using something that the town has, and it's just great that we were able to do that. So, thank you for your office for doing this, and for the town to be cooperative and working with us, this is wonderful.
All right, we are now done with superintendent's report. Board members, we are on page four of your agenda on the board business. Of facilities, Holy Ascension of Christ Orthodox Church, request for license. If you recall, at the previous meeting, this resolution was previously offered and approved as an easement. Our attorney has clarified that the school may not grant an easement in this case, a license must be granted. This language repeats and corrects the previous resolution. So, request for license, the Holy Ascension of Christ Orthodox Church has requested the license for the connection of a storm sewer to Penfield Central School District stormwater infrastructure on the north side of Indian Landing Elementary School to accommodate the proposed construction of parking lot areas for the facility at 650 North Landing Road. The license and connection on our property is requested to avoid a new storm water connection. The license and connection on our property is requested to avoid a new storm water connection at the storm sewer in North Landing Road. A connection in North Landing Road is difficult because of the other utility infrastructure that is in place along the road. There is an existing license for a stormwater connection, however, the proposed connection does not lie within the existing license. The new license language covers the appropriate location and eliminates the need for the existing license. Our civil engineer, Appel Osborne, has reviewed the design drawings and has confirmed that there should be no adverse effect to allowing the church to connect to our storm sewer that connects to the town of Brighton Storm Sewer. Mr. Alan McNiff has reviewed the application and approves. The school attorney has reviewed the license language. It is recommended that we approve this resolution. So at this point, may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education revokes the license granted to Indian Landing Lutheran Church on July 19th, 1966, and authorizes the superintendent of schools to negotiate final terms and to approve a sanitary sewer license to the Holy Ascension of Christ Orthodox Church for the purpose of connecting a new storm sewer to the Penfield Central School District storm sewer infrastructure on the north side of Indian Landing Elementary School. Questions or comments? Catherine?
Mark, I had asked this question, and I appreciate you getting back to me, but because I was uncertain about it and had the question about what's a license and who, you know, issues a license, if you wouldn't mind just explaining quickly?
Sure, certainly, it's, we, the original language and the language that you approved at a previous board meeting contemplated this as an easement, and, and really, this has the same effect, actually with a little fewer teeth. Excuse me, an easement passes with the land, an easement's forever, essentially. A license, not necessarily so. But as we worked on this and researched a little further, we learned that, that a municipal, Board of Education's authorized to convey an easement, an easement for public utilities to municipalities, municipal districts, authorities, or public utilities. The church is none of those things, so you can't use the mechanism of an easement. All we really want to do and, and is to allow them to connect to the storm sewer on our property. So the license, isn't a license the way you might think of it in terms of a driver's license or a permit? It's a, it's an authorization to use the land for this purpose. So the wording of the license is similar, and in fact, as we worked our way backwards, a license was granted in 1966 to the church for this same purpose. It was in fact a license, and, but we're revoking that one. The, the area, the, the spot on our land where that original license is just doesn't work. So we're moving it a little bit and re-authorizing it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yes, it does to me, and I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, non-opposed, thank you. We have no financial items this evening and no policy reviews. Approval of agreement with the Penfield Support Staff Association and the Superintendent of Schools. A contractual agreement between the Superintendent of Schools and the Penfield Support Staff Association has been reached. The settlement is within parameters established by the Board of Education and is recommended by Acting Superintendent Thomas Putnam and Assistant Superintendents Patty Gallagher and Marks and Soucy. The three-year agreement between the district and the Penfield Support Staff Association representing cleaners, couriers, painters, mechanics, ground operators, custodians, and various regular and per diem workers covers the period July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2016. May I have a motion, please, that the superintendent be authorized to enter into an agreement for the period July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2016 with the Penfield Support Staff Association? All moved. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, non-opposed, thank you. President's remarks. I want to start by thanking you for being at the workshop this past Saturday. It was a great workshop, and you know, I want to thank Dr. Putnam and the senior staff for being there with us. I think we've worked hard, you know, on establishing our goals and, you know, set for a great year. I especially want to thank the committee who put together that workshop, Camille, Mark, and John, especially John, for facilitating, you know, twice for us, so thank you for all your work. It will be put to good use this year. So there is that. Also, you know, we've heard about the homecoming invite very briefly, so please, we, I know we received it by mail, so please put that on your calendar, definitely the pep rally also on your calendar. I now have an update regarding the superintendent's position, which is also on our agenda. And tonight, I'd like to give you a brief update on the board's process with regard to the superintendent of the Penfield Central School District, because we've received, received questions from the public, so hopefully this will clarify a little bit what we are doing. As you know, on June 30th, we received the resignation of our former superintendent, Dr. Steve Grimm. At the July 8th Board of Education meeting, we granted Dr. Thomas Putnam a leave of absence from his position as principal of the high school, and appointed him the acting superintendent for the 2014-2015 academic year. We made this appointment with great confidence that Dr. Putnam has both the qualifications to serve in this capacity and the passion for the district that the board looks for in a successful leader. While in this transition phase for the year, the board will continue to keep you updated on any conversations regarding the superintendent position. We do not expect any movement or conversations in this regard until late spring. Meanwhile, Dr. Putnam will provide the district with the necessary leadership required by his position. This board is confident that this will be an outstanding school year, and we pledge to continue to do what is best for the students in Penfield. So I'm hoping that this updates the community a little bit on what, you know, what are our next steps, and definitely, you know, if, as soon as we have any conversations or any meeting, we will be able to share that at the board meeting here. We now move on to unfinished business, and we have none. So under new business, we've got the NESA proposed resolutions. Board members, we have received a link in regards to, to the proposed resolutions that will be, where we will be represented, you know, by Mark at the New York State School Board Convention. He is our delegate, and he will be there to vote on whether we support the resolutions advanced by NESA or not. We've received a link, and I believe, Marsha, do you have?
Some extra copies?
We have extra copies, hard copies, if you would like some, that we pass them. Mark will be present at the Area 2 meeting to see how Area 2 is voting on the resolutions that are advanced by NESA. And, you know, we'd like, we'd like you to please make sure that you have looked at this, get in touch with Mark from now till the Area 2 meeting, and if there is any resolution that you really feel strongly about for or against, to please let Mark know that you would like some more information, and he will come back at the next board meeting and will report to us on NESA's recommendation. Any questions about our process in this regard? Yes?
Maybe you could just update the public on what this ultimately leads to, you know, by having these resolutions approved?
Sure. Well, there are different resolutions, there are the ones that sunset, and there are the ones that are brought back again by NESA because they do not want those resolutions to disappear, whether they're about state testing or funding, or just about any position that were taken either by New York State School Board or by, you know, by specific school board and supported by the rest of the association. So, you know, and every area has, you know, the opportunity to support these resolutions through the annual meeting, which will be in October, at the end of October, I want to say the weekend of the 24th, 25th, somewhere over there. Mark will represent us, you know, at that meeting, at the business meeting, and he will vote to represent our board on whether we support every resolution or not. And, you know, also, some other boards will advance, you know, new position to the floor, and those are also voted on there, and you get to hear from other school boards, you know, who speak for or against, you know, those resolutions. Some of them pass very quickly, some of them take a long discussion by the delegates who really want to represent their boards. It's a very interesting meeting. John has had the privilege of being a delegate, I've had the privilege of being delegate, you know, and other past board members also, and now we have Mark, and that is great. This entailed, in, you know, entails that Mark will be in Canandaigua on Saturday morning, last Saturday in September, you know, representing us and listening to all the Area 2 representatives and a big discussion on all those resolutions. So that's, you know, what happens with those resolutions. I hope that answers, you know, anybody's questions about what's going on. We have received a communication from a resident in regards to the, you know, what we call the Khan Khan, which is, you know, the support of Penfield that we had, you know, a couple of years ago for Constitution Convention. And, you know, if you recall, NESA had agreed to put a committee together to study, you know, the Khan Khan, and we have not heard much in the past couple of years, so, Mark, you know, we'd be glad to give you some history after the communication, after you get a chance to read the communication we received from the resident of Penfield who wrote to us. We'd be glad, we'd be glad to give you some history, you know, and if you can ask, actually, the representative from New York State School Board who will be at the Area 2 meeting, what is going on with that? What did the committee accomplish and do? Because that, you know, that was a big project that was started by Penfield, you know, with past board member Marie Cinty and also past board member Dick Pixley, you know, and other board members who are also sitting on the board who worked on that committee. So we'd love it if you could bring us back some information.
Sounds good.
All right. Questions and comments? No? All right, very good. And under new business, I guess, Mark?
Yes, thank you.
We have one more item?
One more, I just wanted to, we have sort of some late, late-breaking news, and I just wanted to update the board on the status of the project at Bay Trail Gymnasium, and this is the Bay Trail Gymnasium at Scribner Roof. So just to, so everyone's on the same page, that was the project authorized for renovation of the gymnasium and, as well as the locker rooms at Bay Trail and the Scribner Roof. As we've updated, I've updated you in a previous board meeting, one of the challenges we've had with that project, of which there have been several, but the most significant one has been the discovery of vermiculite in the block walls of the gymnasium itself. Vermiculite's an insulating material, and it's assumed, although not, does not always contain asbestos, it's a naturally occurring material, it may contain it. So we're required to treat it as if it does. That's had two impacts on the project. One is the impact on time, and one is the impact on, on money. In terms of time, we had originally planned on being done and turning that gymnasium back over to the district, to the, to the building, to the school for use on October 1st. That, as we moved along, was pushed back to November 1st, and most recently now has been pushed back to December 1st. We've, Mr. Shambo and Ms. Walker, Mary Beth, have been part of those meetings, they understand what's going on, they're working, Mary Beth is working to, to design alternative PE activities, and so we're okay there. Mr. Shambo's been working through the impact on, on intersclass sports. So we're okay with that regard, but certainly as winter gets closer and closer and closer, our options get fewer and fewer and fewer. So the weather's working with us so far, it's supposed to be nice for the next couple of weeks. But what we will be doing, in part, and I, I think I talked a little bit about this before, is we'll, the gymnasium will be turned over to the district undone, so the floor won't be finished, that had originally been planned on being done. We'll have to get back to it in the spring. So once the weather gets better, we'll get, the contractors will get back to work. In the meantime, we need to get it to a place where it can be turned back over. So that's the impact on time. The other is the impact on cost. At this point, the project, because of that, is running over budget, so we'll need to address that. I'm working right now with the school attorney and with, with campus construction for a better estimate, and with the, the district architect around language and the appropriateness. The district can appropriate fund balance for the purpose of this. It's an ordinary contingent expenditure, and that's language that means the board has the authority to appropriate for it because it was unforeseen, and it has potentially a, there's a safety factor and a, and a need factor in terms of being able to get the gymnasium back online associated with it. So we're, we're working our way through that. At this point, I worked today with Mr. Huffman on an estimate for what that budget in MAC might be, and we're in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. So I'll be coming to you for authority to do that, and we'll probably want to schedule for a grander presentation of it, but we'd want to consider an emergency or a special board meeting between now and the next one to be able to address that. There's a number of things I need to get in, in order to be able to do that, but, so I can't, I don't have a date yet picked or to even to suggest, but just to say that we'll be in communication, Marsha will be as we move through the course of the next week or so.
Very good. Board members, any questions or comments? At this point, if, if we can just make sure, you know, to give us just a little bit of time for our calendars?
Absolutely, I understand.
Overnight, thank you.
We'll, we'll do the best we can.
Thank you. And also to make sure that we do have the appropriate notices for the public.
We'll do so.
Thank you very much. All right, there being no further business, may I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 7:50 PM? All moved. Questions, comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, non-opposed, thank you.